Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, June 26, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from the previous meeting. I don't believe there aren't any. Okay. Item C is additions or changes to the agenda. We have several. One is I wanted to add the appointment of Siobhan Gibson as a new appointment to the Human Relations Committee. The rest of the appointments in the packet are reappointments and we'll have a few more next month. So I just handed the bio and statement to the council members. Second, we need to delete under J, New Business, the ordinance listed there was actually passed by the city council a couple of months ago and this accidentally got added to the agenda through a glitch in the agenda software. So, scratch that one out. Gave our planning department a bit of a heart attack today, but just an artifact. And number three, we'd like to move item C, which is the resolution approving the capital improvement plan under the regular agenda up to be the first one under regular agenda because whatever's decided there is going to ultimately impact the budget. So I would ask for a motion to approve moving item C under regular agenda up to be the first one in advance of item A.
I will move approval that we move item number C above item A. We remove under the new business, number one is gone and then we add in the board and commission appointment. Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to public input. If anyone wishes to address the Urbana City Council, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Laney Emmons Topping. Do I start now? Okay, perfect. First, I just want to say good evening and thank you for hearing us out. I know last week and this week, you've heard quite a bit from our neighborhood, which is Savannah Green, Urbana. I am our HOA president and I'm really proud of our neighborhood. I spoke today, or via email with Mayor Marlin, and also emailed all of you about some emails we've received from a neighbor, from Mr. Evans. I want to appreciate everybody's feedback, especially yours, Mayor Marlin. I did bring some photos today. I know not everybody's made it out to our little nugget of Urbana. I appreciate Grace has been out there and Mayor Marlin. But it's kind of hard to envision what we're talking about if you've not been in our neighborhood. It is unlike anything else, most of Urbana. Our alleys are not extra or auxiliary roads. They are the backbone of our neighborhood. Our alleys are how we access our garages, our mailboxes. It's how you get to our park. You have to go through them. We are trash out. The trash trucks use them. Mailman uses them. They are essential infrastructure to our neighborhood. They're not roads we can avoid because they're kind of tumultuous terrain. And I think that's kind of missed if you're not out there and you don't understand when we're saying alleys. They're not behind our houses that we get to ignore. I don't know if you want these photos, and I don't know if I can like cross the line here to give them to you. But you'll see, and then if you do look at them, this photo is one of our main alleyways and it is absolutely gone. There is no solid structure. It is rock. You could not roller skate on it without tripping. It's essentially marbles. Many of our oldest residents live right there. They're fighting cancer right now and have fallen at their mailbox and I have had to go help them up. Our mailman has struggled in this alley because he can't get through. In other pictures, you'll see, this one down here is our roads that were just patched, which we were really excited about. Thank you for sealing those. But you'll see, it's sealed around a giant pothole. It still is not functional to an enjoyable car ride. You would trip if you walked over it. This was just fixed last week. This is the repair. This is post the $60,000 or however much was paid to fix that road specifically. I would encourage you to look at them. The other photos are patch jobs that have been done in previous years where they come out to our alleys and put asphalt and rock down. And while I appreciate those efforts, they don't last. They don't last about six months. You'll see it's crumbling around it. It's just not supporting it. You'll also see other big potholes. If you drive down it, hold on tight. I hope you have good suspension because you're going to lose your lunch. They're bouncy. But that's still being said, we love our neighborhood. We're showing up. We have a really active HOA. We have community block parties. We have newsletters. And for years, as the president, people have begged me, please fix our alleys. And I say, they're not mine to fix. I can't. But I'm running out of answers and I'm running out of ways to appease people. So I ask you all to please engage with us. Please help us figure out how to fix it. I know it's been on the docket and I know unforeseen circumstances have kind of changed that. As a business leader here in town, I understand that construction costs have changed tremendously. But I still urge you to find a solution that can help maintain it and improve the quality of our neighborhood so we can continue to grow. That's everything. Do you want the photos?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I'll bring them to you. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council?
Hi, I'm Liz Roetremel-Archie and I am a 19-year resident of Savannah Green. Last week, I stood before the council informing you of some of the many problems caused to the Savannah Green neighbors and their property as a result of the poor alley conditions. I will not use my time tonight to repeat those issues, but I do hope, and I know that some of you were, able to reflect upon those comments made not just by me, but my neighbors and the many emails that were sent. And I know that some of you did take us up on our suggestion to walk, drive, or even bike ride the alleys in our neighborhood to see the conditions for yourself. Above all, I ask, I ask you, would these conditions be acceptable for your own family and neighbors? Would you be content just to sit by for nearly 20 years and let the neglect go unnoticed and uncared for by the city, as it is at the bottom of my driveway? It's not acceptable to me. On several occasions, I have called Public Works when the potholes in the alleys have become too numerous, too large, or too dangerous. In April of 2022, I made one of these calls and Public Works has always been great. They said they were aware of our alley conditions, that the city was working on a long-range plan for repairs and that they would come and fill the holes. So the holes were patched yet again. And then on April 19, the homeowners association posted in our neighborhood Facebook page to let us know that they had checked with the city and there was indeed a plan and it was part of the capital improvement plan and the city was hiring an engineering firm to start working on the project. We were told that the firm would be out to assess the alleys and take samples in June and that the design stages of the project would take place in July. And at that time, construction was slated to be completed by December of 2023. Fast forward to September 26, 2022. There was another post in the neighborhood group alerting neighbors of a gentleman hanging out in the alley by our driveways and garages. And we're always alerting each other and looking out for each other's safety. So the police weren't notified and it was confirmed that he was hired and he was there as a surveyor to look at the elevation, water flow, and drainage in the alleys for the pavement that was going to be replaced soon. And I was really excited to see that there was some follow-through and that the work was going to happen. On June 1 of this year, 2023, it was announced that the city had hired a company to begin repair of our main roads and the city printed flyers and posted them on our front doors to notify us of the work. And upon asking some follow-up questions to our HOA, I learned that the alley work would follow. I was told that 50% of our alleys would be completely redone, including digging down to repair the poor subgrade. And that this work would be staggered over June, July, and August to make sure that no one was blocked out of their homes. I saw a map provided by the city that showed the really bad part behind my driveway was going to be fixed. And I was super excited and I called all my relatives. I was like, it's finally getting fixed. And I was so happy that our alleys were getting a much-needed overhaul. But then, on June 17, 2023, all that excitement was washed away. We were told that the bid to fix our alleys came over way too high and the city did not have enough money. The alleys are not getting fixed. Furthermore, the funds would be reallocated to different projects. So, I come today to you to ask you, if not today, when? I'm not an economist, engineer, or an expert on infrastructure, but I do know that not fixing the roads is not going to save the city any money. The cost of labor and construction materials is not going to come down anytime soon. Prolonging the repairs will just add to the amount of work that it will eventually need to get done. The city will continue to pay for temporary Band-Aids to cover the large gaping festering wound that is the Savannah Green alleys. Please reconsider pushing the project down the proverbial road again. Please vote tonight not to reallocate the funds set aside for Savannah Green. Please honor the city and your constituents by following through with the already agreed-upon capital improvement plans. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Okay. We'll move on to council input and communications. Council members.
Grace? Thank you. Just wanted to have some response to some of the Savannah Green residents who I appreciate coming out. Just wanted to say that I definitely believe in the severity of the issue and with Savannah Green being in Ward 6 and I have visited a few number of times recently with the litter cleanup on Earth Day, which was a wonderful event doing in that neighborhood. So I really appreciate and respect the work that this neighborhood's been doing with a strong HOA and having a strong community there. I did want to clarify that with this, hopefully, people were able to watch the discussion on the CIP last week. And just wanted to clarify, and I'll ask Tim to maybe confirm when we get to that part of the meeting. Oh, there it is. That the plan is for $300,000 in this year's budget, which will fully replace some of the worst sections, not the surface patching, which we've done previously. And we can have that whole conversation at that point in the agenda. But that's my understanding and gave me a little reassurance that it's really getting down because again, the issue is the underlying consistency of the soil. The Public Works specialists say that going above that would have some diminishing returns because that $300,000 would fully get the worst parts. They estimated 10% to 25% of the surface area. And then we also discussed, and I fully support seeking longer-term solutions for the alleyways. And this may mean applying for grants, looking for long-term replacement planning, and getting other bids for construction because that $1.6 million we had planned would not cover the desired replacement because of how the bids came out currently, unfortunately. So I understand the frustration of kicking it down the road. I have a little bit of optimism and I definitely would love to hear more about the plan for at least fully replacing the worst parts. And I'm very much willing to continue the conversations with the neighborhood, with your HOA and residents, and with the city Public Works to execute a longer-term solution because I agree that we do need to have addressed the underlying problem and not just paying money to surface patch it, which doesn't work and doesn't last. So I just wanted to clarify some of those things and definitely still open to more input and continued conversation. So thank you all for coming out.
Chris?
Yeah, I really appreciate, especially Secretary, I forget her last name and I apologize, Jen of the Savannah Green HOA, who wrote a very excellent letter correcting a lot of my, I'll say, assumptions and some of my perceptions about the Savannah Green situation. Reviewing the CIP, it sure was on the list of top five projects to be done this year. It was at $1.9 million and it has been reduced down to $300,000. And the question now before us is whether, well, first let me get back to what I wrote today and yesterday, or today, anyway. I didn't mean to be unprofessional. My intent was to be honest. And so forgive me if I came across as a little rough and unprofessional. I wasn't trying to insult anybody. I was just being honest with what my perceptions were. I thank Jen again for correcting me and I did look at the paperwork and she's absolutely right. This project was promised to Savannah Green residents and it was slated to be done this year. And it has suddenly come off the, you know, has been drastically reduced. And the question, I guess, we'll talk about this later and I encourage you to stay for it, which is whether the $300,000 patching plan, will that be adequate? And so I guess we'll find out in a little bit. But again, I just wanted to ask for your forgiveness. I meant no harm and I appreciate you correcting me. Thanks.
Jan?
Yeah, I also want to thank the residents of Savannah Green for their emails and the comments tonight and last week. I wasn't here, but watched the recording. My understanding is similar to what Grace shared and so I also do want to make sure that we get that clarified for the residents of Savannah Green. I don't, at least for myself, I wouldn't say that it's being deprioritized because we don't know that it's important. It's a matter of fiscally what is possible at this point. But I do think that we need to make sure it's really clear what the plan is now and then what is the plan to fix it long-term, right? Because this is, you know, this is not what anybody wants for any part of Urbana. And it is unique, right? That's how folks are accessing their homes. There's a reason it was prioritized at the level that it was in the CIP previously. And so I want to make sure that I'm understanding and the residents are understanding exactly why this change has happened. From what I heard from the recording was, there just isn't the money to do it with the quote that came in. But I do look forward to hearing more information on that, too.
James?
This is general council comments, right?
Yes.
So let me start out by saying, I want to appreciate everyone who came together for the Martin Luther King Jettie Road Celebration on Saturday. It was a tremendous event, as it always has been. I was fortunate to be there as a part of Urbana Rotary, who was there. It was a hot day, but it was a good day. I also want to mention that this problem with alleys for Savannah Green has been on our radar for a while. It's actually come to council a couple of times for updates on it. I can remember because we have an excellent tool for pavement condition. And when it came up, I went straight to that tool and looked at how things looked there. I have some friends who live in Savannah Green. It's an unusual and unique neighborhood. It was an experiment to some extent. And those alleys and that construction was meant to create a different kind of neighborhood feel. And I think it's certainly succeeded in creating a community there. But we created a lot of pavement that needed maintenance. We expanded our infrastructure. And so I'm going to be supportive of us finding a way to getting to repair for this. Like others, I will defer to our conversation later to talk about how we're going to get to that. But it is a problem that has been on council's radar. It's been before us several times and we have the data to understand why it was one of the top 10 or one of the top five issues coming into this capital improvement plan year. So, thank you for coming out and thank you for calling more attention to it.
Any other council comments? Sharice?
I just, I wanted to say also that I was so pleased with the Jettie Roads Day gathering at King Park. I think it was probably one of the biggest crowds that I've seen since I've been going. And I would like to acknowledge LaShonda Cunningham and her, just her, the, oh God, I'm losing my words. The commitment that she has in honoring her grandmother and how she really wants to bring everybody together in a community and she's worked hard on this for 25 years. And I hope that we can continue to have really nice gatherings like that in Ward 3 for a very long time. There was no drama. It was just fun. Kids were out having fun. It was a family day. It was wonderful. So I wanted to acknowledge that.
Any other council comments? I just wanted to say, I'll echo Sharice's words. We're delighted that Jettie Roads Day was such a success and we're honored to have LaShonda Cunningham also as a City of Urbana employee. She estimated about 2,000 people attended the event, so it was, I think, probably the biggest one yet. So it was a tremendous. I also have corresponded with folks from Savannah Green. And as I indicated, I was out on my bike in Savannah Green yesterday morning and I rode up and down every alley and street out there. So I got to see firsthand. I also got to see how the neighborhood is growing. There's probably a half dozen houses, already new houses, under construction and about 40 more will be built. So, this neighborhood will be completed after 20 years and it's turning into the neighborhood where people are able to buy their first home because the homes they're building are now the entry-level homes. That's the reality we have. So it's wonderful to see the growth there and we'll work with you. We know you're there. We know the problems that are there. So thank you. We'll move on to unfinished business. There is, oh, one other announcement. The meetings, the Committee of the Hall meeting and City Council meeting for July 3 and July 10 are canceled. So the next meeting will be on July 17. Unfinished business, there is none. We'll go on to reports from the Committee of the Hall. Chandra Bishop.
Bringing forward from the Committee of the Hall on the consent agenda is Resolution Number 2023-06-073R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois concerning certified housing inspections, term of 2023 to 2026.
Is there a second? Second. Moved by Chandra, seconded by Mary Alice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And on the regular agenda, the first item is ordinance number 2023, nope, resolution number 2023-06-072R, a resolution approving the capital improvement plan fiscal years 2024 to 2028.
I'll second, put it on the floor. Thank you.
Good evening, council. So we're here before you tonight to request the adoption of the capital improvement plan. We went through, we came to you in May with a draft and we came back earlier this month with some revisions to that draft and had some good discussion on this. Without jumping into too many details, at this point in time, we've not recommended any changes to this capital improvement plan from last week. It's still as proposed. I would ask if you guys have any questions regarding the capital improvement plan, aside from Savannah Green, and then we'll talk about that independently.
Grace?
I was wondering if you found that CDTA map of Urbana?
Yes, definitely. Is it still not working for you? I tried it the same night that you had it and there was some kind of glitch on the consortium's website, but it's worked since then for me.
Oh, I didn't try again. I had tried a few times the past few weeks and lost hope.
I'll check in with the consortium, but it's worked for me since that night. That night when I tried it, it did not work, but we can definitely get that for you.
Yeah, and for anybody tuning in on the page itself, when it talks about the CDTA areas, there's a link. It'll take you to the county's website. There are occasions when there are levels that are not working quite right, so yeah, let us know if you have any more problems with it.
CDTA stands for Community Development Target Areas, for people listening, but not watching.
Thank you.
Any other questions outside of Savannah Green? Mary Alice?
It's adjacent to Savannah Green, so can you tell me explicitly? I know we've already talked about it, but there's two projects, right? That changed positions based on the movement of the funds between Savannah Green and those were the Illinois and the second one was?
It was Vine and Illinois.
Vine and Illinois.
And then Broadway Avenue from Elm to Park Street.
Okay, all right. And the total amount of those were what?
I'll have to look these up. Pardon me for a minute. Oh, now where's the homepage? We have on, in the Capital Projects and Transportation section, there's a table that summarizes the projects with their priority score and their cost estimates.
John, can you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry, yeah. So, here in the Capital Projects section, we have a summary table that lists the capital projects for transportation with their scores and their project cost estimates. And so, the Vine Street and Illinois Street projects, $2.1 million. The Broadway Avenue, let's see, Elm to Park, that is $1.6 million. Essentially, we added the Broadway Avenue project to the five-year plan. The Vine and Illinois Street project got moved forward a couple of years in the five-year plan. Those were the changes.
The Broadway wasn't on there before, is what I'm hearing you say?
Correct. It was the top-ranked, outside-looking-in project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Great. Let's focus on Savannah Green.
Okay, just a little brief overview of Savannah Green. It was first added to the CIP in 2020. At the time, it was, you know, kind of blanketed in there as a reconstruction project for the alleys and Smith Road at the time. And it was forecasted further out in the CIP. It wasn't in the next year's budget. It was in future fiscal years. Since coming on board and looking at that, the original estimate for full reconstruction was $5.3 million for the alleys and Smith Road at the time. When we came in and we started doing a more detailed quantitative prioritization of our projects, looking at functional class, safety, a number of other items, there were a number of other projects that stacked up as a higher priority at the time. I don't think anybody here is doubting that the condition of it necessitates, you know, to be addressed. But we have roads throughout the city that are local roads, that are collectors, that are even arterials that are in similar and even worse condition at times. It's not as contesting that the condition necessitates repairs, replacement, many things. It's how far can we stretch our dollars to try to best address the majority of our needs? Which, what's happened over the years is, as we've updated this priority scoring, we continue to find more and more projects that are substantially higher scoring. If you look at some of these things, and I'll kind of pass this off to John to talk a little bit about, but if you look at just our project priority scoring page, you'll see just a number of the projects that are outside of our CIP. Really, what we want to do is kind of provide perspective of, you know, there are other really important projects that are also not getting done. And I'll let John kind of go through a handful of those with you guys and then I'll jump back in on some other things and moving forward type stuff.
Yeah, so, but looking at this same table that I pulled up earlier, just again, a summary of the, how priority scoring and the cost comes together and we try to identify which projects will fit into the five-year plan. Along the top of the table, we show the seven categories that are used in the scoring. Safety, which is based on safety records of crashes primarily. Class score speaks to if it's an RT or a roadway, collector, a local street, alley. Condition score, it relates to the scan that James mentioned earlier that we have of our roadways, of the condition. Funding score is kind of a measure of how likely we are to get outside assistance for this project. Linking score, if there's other things related to it like drainage needs, multiple segments of road, or maybe another agency that's involved in this project. Whether the route's on an MTD bus line or not, gets a bump up for that as a bus line. And then the Community Development Target Area, if it's within a low to mod income census block within the city. And so, a score out of 100, higher the number, the higher the priority. As a couple of examples, so Savannah Green scores on this system as a 26.4 out of 100. The highest-scoring project is Lincoln Avenue from Washington to Clarny with 88.9. The other lowest-scoring project of the, and this project, again, this system is only for transportation capital projects. It doesn't work for all projects in the capital improvement plan. But the couple of projects that, you know, we scroll down and we have a backlog of projects that are not in the CIP. So we have $50 million approximately. So we have $50 million approximately in the CIP, about $16.3 million identified projects that didn't make the cut. A couple of examples would be Anderson Street from Mumford to Florida. Part of that, I'd say from Colorado to Florida of Anderson Street was in the CIP last year. As we learned more about it, it was part of the Philo Colorado Anderson project, but as we learned more about it, it was not a resurfacing scope. It was a full reconstruction scope based on the condition of the pavement. So, uh, the, uh, so that one, in order to keep the Philo part of the project, the Philo and the Colorado parts moving forward, which is, you see, they scored a 55.6 on our system. Anderson Street by itself only scored a 41, and so we dropped Anderson as we couldn't keep it moving with the budget that we have. But, you know, see, it also scores higher than Savannah Green does. Fairlon Avenue is an example of a project that was in the CIP when Tim stepped into his role as the director, that we had bumped down as a lower priority than the other projects. And Vine in Illinois and last year's CIP also included Elm Street. But as prices increased and we updated our estimates, in order to get Vine and Illinois, the higher priority roads in the five-year plan, we had to cut Elm Street out. And so Elm Street's a, another decent scoring project that just didn't make the cut for budget reasons. Those are just a few examples, just to kind of highlight the logic we used as we tried to build this five-year program.
So kind of going down, you know, the root of the problem is we're, we're, we've been unsustainably funding this forever. The hole is deep, digging out of it is not easy, so any money that we don't spend very strategically the right way digs the hole deeper. Just a few numbers that I calculated coming in here, just to kind of provide perspective and reference of this is if, if we spent 100% of the money that we had dedicated from our local and state motor fuel tax annually, which is about 2, 2.25 million, towards only lifecycle replacement, not towards maintenance or operations or anything else, no rehab, no nothing else, just lifecycle replacement, all of our roads would have to last 100 years with no operations and maintenance. Now, IDOT suggests that a road will last 45 years with all of the recommended operations and maintenance. So based on the funding that we have dedicated for that, outside of CRNI, so CRNI are unrestricted funds, we subsidize with that to try to make up that gap somewhat, but just really to give you a little bit of scale. So conversely, if we said all of our pavements were actually going to last 45 years, based on IDOT's average pavement life with 100% of recommended maintenance, we would need to be spending $11.1 million a year just on lifecycle replacement, not rehab, not maintenance, not operations, nothing. We're not anywhere near those, so everything, we have to make concessions. And what's happened over the years, you know, we don't have the pavement data that James referred to historically over the last two, three, four decades. We have it since 2019. Now, the intention would be to keep up with that so that we can see if the changes we're making are making a difference or not. We've done some projections with that, and the answer is if, if our funding stays the same over the next 10 years, we're going to continue to make concessions in the level of service. So it's all about strategizing around how we can, you know, maintain functionality and operability, you know, conceding the, the quality of that. You know, I would say, I certainly understand the residents of Savannah Green, this is their main axis. It's essentially like we built two road networks out there. It's not an alley, it's a road network. It's another extension of the road network. Now, doing so makes it, you know, there are some challenges with that, too. But when you look at these things, you know, the, the challenge is not, do they need it? Lots of our roads need it, well, well over what we can do. You know, that, that's the biggest challenge with all of this. So we look at how can we, how can we maintain, you know, operational functionality of these things? And that's what we've proposed in this, is, is we've, we've scaled this down. So Savannah Green, we, we said, when I first came in, I said, let's do a study of this. Let's evaluate options here before we just rip the Band-Aid off and go with full reconstruction. So we did, we did a $50,000 study on the area to evaluate the condition of it, do, do a more formal condition assessment where we actually did pavement cores, soil borings and things to get to the root problem, in which what we found out was the base and soil were, were an issue beneath the pavement. The pavement itself wasn't necessarily the, the driving issue of this, but it was exasperated by freezing thaw cycles related to that, that unstable base. Now, when we look at that stuff, you know, ideally, we would love to be able to address that the way that we should address it, but we have to make concessions. So what we've proposed is doing, you know, this 10 to 20% patching effort, and we've done this on other roads, we're doing it everywhere. And when, when we say patching, I should be very specific and say full-depth patching. This isn't spray patching that has kind of been the, the, the one-year Band-Aid in theory that's going on. This is, we're going to cut out pavement and replace full-depth pavement to reconstruct that for effectively, you know, a 15 to 20-year life for that section of pavement. Now, there are sections of pavement out there that they're in poor condition, or some of it's fair condition. And the idea would be is not to focus on if it's there, to focus on the, the bigger, larger areas that are too far gone to really even do anything with, get them up to snuff. And then ideally, what, or what's probably going to happen is the futures, we're going to do a lot of areas and then next year, we're going to have to, you know, reevaluate like we do every year of all of our roadway networks and see, is there more patching needed out here? Can we do a preventative maintenance treatment like a, a seal code or a cape seal on this? Let's, let's say we do our patching, it holds up really well, all of the other sections are seemingly not deteriorating any further. If we can cape seal that stuff and at more of like a $10 per square yard versus the $265 square yard we saw in our bid for reconstruction, can we buy 10 years for $10 versus 15 to 20 years for $265? It's about a 10x difference when you look at a benefit cost analysis of cost per year of pavement life that we're buying. So the intention is not to walk away from this. The intention is to spend our money wisely, do the patching in the most critical areas, things that are beyond failure, get those addressed, and then probably look at crack sealing the entirety of these things and potentially pursuing a cape seal or additional patching and then a cape seal if we decide that other areas are still failing more rapidly than what we can keep up with.
And I might add, too, as you were talking to him, it reminded me that another project we had dropped last year from the CIP was Race Street from Windsor to Florida. And that was one that instead of doing a capital project, we did pavement patching. And we essentially spent last year's cycle, uh, patching cycle budget on three-quarters of Race Street. And that if anybody would want to see what we have in mind, you could see that stretch of Race Street for the kind of treatment we're looking to do in the alleys, at least as a first step, like Tim mentioned.
Full-depth pat, full-depth patching.
Yes.
James?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna apologize to my colleagues and to you, too. I was not here last week, and I may have missed this in following up on what happened last week. But in August 22nd, we approved $1.9 million to work on this. So we approved that amount of money to go towards this. How much of that money have we spent? And are we just rescinding our authorization to vote for that money that we spent?
So, and John, you can correct me on the exact numbers, but I think we spent about $200,000 between the study and the initial design efforts to get to bid on this partial reconstruction, partial rehabilitation project.
I mean, in my mind, this council with this problem said we were willing to spend up to $2 million to work towards solving this problem. Just dropping it is, is not what I would have seen from that kind of authorization. I mean, we may shorten what we have to do, but that's, that's how much we were willing to put towards solving this problem. I remember because August 22nd is my birthday, so it kind of stands out in my mind that I was sitting in city council and talking about this. But I had, I mean, we sat up here, we voted, we said this was a big enough problem that we wanted to support it to that magnitude. I see, I can see not being able to do everything we thought it could do, but not expending the effort that we agreed, that was asked of us and we agreed to commit at that time to this problem is, is a challenge for me.
Yeah, and I, I, I don't disagree with any of that. I think those are all valid points. I, I think, you know, some of this is the information's gotten better. So the study got completed, the design got completed, the bid got realized. And through the design and bidding process, we continued to try to value engineer this down to something that we felt was stomachable for this area. And we had the, you know, outside of the 200,000 between study and design, we had the construction estimate down to 1.3 million, and the bids came in at 2.2 million. And that was reduced scope and everything else, too. So not contesting that the 1.9 wasn't authorized, but we have better information to go off of now.
And, and I think what our recommendation is, is that, you know, we would not recommend spending that high of a cost per square yard on these alleys, by the way, that they fit into the priority of our network. I think that's, that's essentially what our recommendation is. It's not that we shouldn't address this alley, it's just not in to that cost that we were pursuing before, if that's a fair way to say it.
Yeah.
Chris? Grace?
The 550,000 there for the project estimated cost is not accurate, right? Or is that an accurate, up-to-date estimate?
It includes the money expended to date with the 300,000 that we have proposed for FY '24.
Okay, thank you. And so it sounds like, what is it earlier about the full replacement, that that is accurate for that amount, and that you see that there's some diminishing things? And I do agree with looking for that longer-term one instead of the temporary patching and what's going to make sense in the long run. And so it was estimated 1.3 million for the construction, and you said the bid came back at 2.2, and you think it's just not a good cost there? And I do appreciate your scoring system, and I do actually highly respect that. So my understanding is that, that's some of the problem when it's only complaint-based. I know Savannah Green's a wonderful, unique neighborhood, but that some cities can find themselves into problems where their infrastructure is just based on who complains. And there are typically certain people in certain areas who have more time and resources on their hands to complain than others. And so I definitely respect and appreciate that we have the scoring system. And it's a balance of having that priority system and taking into account the public input and the unique circumstances and things here. So I was wondering if you could speak to any of the longer-term plans? You mentioned the crack sealing, but I wonder if you go like further, like is there a plan of desire for the full replacement, tear it down to the soil, like you said, take out, it sounds like some soil needs to come out, put some rock underneath and fully replace that? Is there a plan, or you're hoping that this, the full replacement of sections and then joint crack sealing will be the final thing?
So I would say the, the full-depth replacement, patching of the worst areas is the first line of defense. Let's go in, let's fix those problems. We don't know how the things are going to react. Different pavement deteriorates at different rates depending on the, the soil, the base, the pavement, everything within that individual section. That's why you'll drive down a road and one section you've got a huge issue, and then 10 feet over, you are perfectly fine. You know, that's, the, the answer would be is do the pavement patching of the worst areas and then reassess. Now, what it could be, the intent was, we, we, we thought we had a crack sealing program, that it was our pilot year for our crack sealing program, which we really want to make an annual thing because that prolongs life of pavement for a very low amount in comparison almost other, every other preventative maintenance measure we do, is keeping the moisture out of the bases to prevent free, impacts from freezing thaw cycles. We actually attempted to try to extend our joint and crack sealing contract through these areas, and we couldn't come to an agreement with the contractor doing that. So, you know, we have it just listed within our capital improvement plan as a maintenance program for joint and crack sealing, but the intention would be pavement patching in these areas, and the Savannah Green alleys would be part of that program to further crack seal those in the fiscal year '24. And if, if we get through the patching of this and we go out and reassess, and there's other areas that need full-depth patching, before we do what I would say is more of a global surface treatment, like a, a seal code, a cape seal, there's a lot of different means and methods to try to really get a good seal. Once you get the, the primary cracks and things filled and, and solved and they're stable, putting a, a global treatment over all of that to fully treat all of the pavement for a, a fraction of the cost. But that would be assessed after this year, is what I would say.
Mary Alice?
So first, I'd like to apologize to Savannah Green. I, my email's not working, so I haven't read any of the emails. I appreciate you coming out and, and telling us about your challenges and so forth. The, the second thing that I wanted to bring up was with your scoring system. Would you mind scrolling up so we can see the column headers for us?
Of course.
So, so the safety score is, is auto accidents, not anything with pedestrians, correct?
Well, no, that's not necessarily true. I mean, well, it would be reported with auto accidents, yes, it's.
Reported with auto accidents, okay. Number one, and if, if I remember what you said, class score had to do with the type of street it was?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Right? You know, I, I spoke about this last time. Savannah Green alleys, in, in some regards, is a misnomer, right? It's really not an alley. It's not how it's being used, right? We might classify it as that. So I think that their score of 26.4 is, is a little low because they're being punished for the fact that we're calling them alleys. And they're basically being punished because there's no auto accidents, generally speaking, over there. If they are, maybe the neighbors solve them, what have you. So I guess my, my question is to, to reflect upon the amount of money that we've already requested, we've, you've already requested and we've approved, the 1.9. Was the intent that that would fully replace all of the alleys at the time? Was that the intent? Or was it that it would replace only part of the alleys?
That might, it might have been the concept. Oh, no, because the original concept was 5.3 million, wasn't it?
Yeah, so realistically, we looked at this thing and we said, we can't, we cannot afford to reconstruct roadways that are less than 20 years old. We would never catch up. Like I said, you know, right now, our funding supports 100-year lifecycle, so we backed that off and we said, let's look at some rehabilitation options for this first. Can we do an overlay? Can we do patching and cape seal? Can we do, we, we looked at a number of different things. So when that got rebudgeted from 5.3 down to 2.1 or something, I think is what it was in 2021, it was highly conceptual based on the idea that we were going to find a rehabilitation option for it that could do 100% of the alleys with rehabilitation, not reconstruction.
And I know that when we initiated that study, our hope was that we could find something short of full reconstruction that would, you know, treat the pavement. But when we found that it was the soil that was the primary cause, that, that eliminated a lot of surface rehabilitation treatments that would have, like, you know, fixed the cause of the problem.
You know, and this, the system that we have, and I think it was Will and Carol that first started this whole plan, the way that you've been laying out the, the SIP plan, but I've been on council since 2016. Savannah Green alleys have been on the mind of city council since 2016. So it's, it might have officially showed up in our plan in 2020, but, but they have been talked about for now, a lot of years. I, I don't have a solution. I'm trying to find a middle way here. And, you know, if we had 1.9 million, basically, that we said that we were going to spend on them, that doesn't give us 50% of the alleys reconstructed, right? But now we're jumping down to 300,000. So is the idea that we don't put more money into these patches, so to speak, full-depth patches? I'm just trying to figure out the logic there.
So there's just, you're starting, there's big jumps. So that's part of the issue is, you know, if we, if we went and said, we're going to replace every panel that has a crack in it, 300,000 wouldn't cut it. 300,000 is addressing the worst of the worst shattered panels, you know, panels that have had, that have been completely crushed and/or are nearly non-existent. It's going to replace panels that have broken, and now the freezing thaw cycle has created major potholes or major heaves in there. Realistically, if we were going to go through and do 100% of pavement reconstruction for the areas that were generally in poor condition, we would be doing 50% of the alleys in full reconstruction to the tune of 2.2 million-ish, just using our, our rough bid lately, and not doing anything with the other 50% of our alleys. And I think, and I don't know, I think one thing I wanted to point out, and I don't know, John, you can speak to this in the priority scoring, but the alleys, I don't know if, is the nine represent an alley?
Yeah, I was going to mention that. And the 13.4 is a local street. So if it, if it was considered a street, not an alley, it would have a score of like 30, 31, something like that.
Chris? Chris?
I appreciate you guys trying to, we have more roads than we have money, and you're doing the best you can. Scoring system is, as we talked about- Scoring system is, as we talked about this years ago, was fair, you know, a fair scoring system. I share James's concern that 1.9 was dedicated to this. And from what I read today with the HOA with Savannah Green, you were working with them, promising them, well, well, I don't know what the negotiations were, but they were, Tim, their understanding is 1.9 was going to be applied to their alleys in some kind of way. And now all of a sudden, and, and again, not, there's nothing nefarious about this, but you've made some adjustments, as you said, with better information, okay? So, but, but we are in this kind of, you know, from a citizen point of view, a broken promise situation here, from a citizen point of view, okay? And I guess I'm going to go back to the 300,000 dedicated and this, you know, these plans that you're making with the, the patch, deep, the deep repair patching that you're going to do on the worst of the worst areas. I hear something about the way the Race Street was done with some, some of that kind of repair. And I guess, you know, obviously, let's, you know, go right ahead with that $300,000 plan. Let's do that for sure. But I would invite Savannah Green residents to then come back and tell us to what, you know, to what degree does those new repairs satisfy the problems? I mean, I think we're going to have to work together here. And then talk next year, maybe, about how do we allocate, if, if the repairs aren't enough, talk about allocating more money again. But so let's, you know, I think we're stuck with, not, well, not stuck, but I think we're committing to 300,000 right away, we're going to get on it in some kind of way. And I'm, now who does the patching? Us or?
We, we would, we would contract the patching.
Contract, okay. Are we going to have trouble again with bidders overbidding the 300,000? We don't know yet.
We, I mean, with a patching program, essentially the idea is we're going to get as far as we need to get. If, my, my speculation is that we'll go out, we'll physically lay out these patches to get the worst of the worst, we'll get a bid on those. If it comes in 320,000, we're probably still saying, let's, let's do the 320,000.
Okay. And I would, I would support that if you came to me and said, I need 20,000 more, no problem. But there's going to have to be some evaluation by you folks going, okay, that's not bad, but, and then, and I would, I would really encourage you to identify the sections that you really want repaired. And right, and I mean, I trust Tim's guys to, you know, accurately assess the situation, but, but we're going to have to work together on this. And, yeah, that's, that's kind of my thoughts at this time. Thanks.
Jay?
Yeah, I have a question. So from listening to the recording last week, it sounded like we got a bid from one firm and then you approached another that said, we're too busy to even consider it. I understand that, but we don't have anything allocated for future years, right? So I, and I think, I think that's a conversation that is worth having, too, of like, I do think it, it would at least feel to the residents of Savannah Green that a commitment had been made to make major progress, not fix the whole thing, but make major project, progress. And, you know, based off of a fair scoring system, based off of all the information you've provided, I understand that scaling back, but the need's still there, right? It's, it's not going to get better, we all acknowledge that, but we're not allocating anything in recognition of that. So I think that, you know, I don't know what the capacity of that other firm might be in a year from now. So I guess there's, there's kind of that question of, is that something where there might be more options? Of course, we can't really, like, completely project, we don't know, you know, how construction costs are going to be affected and, you know, but this is a long plan, right? This is a multi-year plan where we're going from what I think residents were hoping that over a million dollars' worth of funding would have already gone into is now getting scaled back to less than half a million, right? Or around half a million between the, the two different fiscal years. So I guess that ended up being more of a comment than a question, but I think it's, it's important to note. And I guess that, that question would, do you think there might be more opportunities? You know, if we're looking at other years within the CIP?
Yeah, and I think probably the answer is, going down this path, it's, let's go get the worst of the worst. I agree with Chris, you know, we need to check in and see how, because we, we need to see how these things hold up, too. Because we, we project these are the worst of the worst for a reason. You know, they lasted however long they lasted until they were complete failures. The other sections, you know, there's a fair portion that's in fair shape, we'll say. And then there's another portion that's in, you know, somewhere between fair and poor. And, you know, I think we have to see what, what time does for those type of areas. If we do these, we do crack sealing, does this hold up really well? And we've spent a fraction of the money on this. If we do this and we do crack sealing and we're continuously in failures, we're probably chasing this thing with patching programs year over year.
So I guess, kind of related to that, if we're looking at, say, we do the 300,000 and FY '24 for the worst, what we're just saying is the worst of the worst now, what does that look like if, say, we did that over multiple years? Are we just going to end up with, like, you know, kind of a ridiculous rock climbing terrain? Like, what does that look like if we're just doing chunk, and chunk, and chunk?
You would just see different colors of gray on the pavement. So, I mean, if you do, if we do patching down, we did patching down Race Street, if you go down there, the, the pavement that was put in 30 years ago is a different color than the new pavement. And if we do patching there again next year, you're just going to have different colors of gray ultimately.
So, and I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, because again, when we see, like, the pictures and we, we all know, right, those little, little bits in the potholes, you're talking about a whole chunk, right? So again, I'm just trying to, to make sure that we're being really clear. If we're making this commitment, we assess it and say, okay, so that seems like it was impactful, let's go ahead and do the next worst, just as, as another possibility. I, I do think we need to think about, you know, the expectations of our residents because the plan that we have, the scoring system we have makes a lot of sense, but the commitment predates that, right? The, the, the conversation goes back to at least 2016. And just like we've talked about, the expectations that the city do something for Dr. Ellis, I think that when we've been hearing year after year, you know, for a decade, right, that something's a problem, that there needs to be some sort of movement, you know, towards that. And I understand that that's part of what's, you know, allocated for FY '24, but then there isn't anything past that. So again, not exactly questions, but part of the conversation.
Absolutely. Well, and I think, you know, there's an importance there that, you know, you stated, too, is, you know, past commitments versus better information. The, the fact is, this is a living plan. We change it every year. That's why it's a five-year rolling CIP. Year, the, the second through fifth year are unpromised, essentially, they're not passed in the budget because if we get better information and just, you know, for perspective in 2020, Stone Creek subdivision, the entirety of the pavement in Stone Creek was slated for replacement in the five-year CIP at that time, which, after we got our condition assessments, is the best pavement we have in town. And that was at 15.3 million. But life, life, lifespan-wise, if you're just looking at age, Savannah Green and Stone Creek were constructed around the same time. They were constructed differently.
Quick question, and Grace, you can come up. The developer was the original builders of this crappy alleys, the bad soil alleyways, right?
Correct.
How come we can never hold them responsible for this stuff?
Well, we, we can. There is a statute of limitations onto how long we can do that.
Yeah.
Typically, and John, I'll just let you talk about this because you, you live, breathe the land development code and MOP now.
I mean, essentially, the city has a chance, once, the, once the infrastructure's constructive, do a final inspection, things are looking okay, come back in a year, are there any problems presenting themselves? I mean, we have to have accepted that there was, the city have done enough observation, collected documentation, evidence, there should have been documentation that, you know, things were constructed properly. And once the city accepts it, that one-year maintenance period passes, essentially it's our responsibility now because we have, we have taken on that, that liability.
Grace?
Thank you. So I, I appreciate the conversation and I hope that we've at least clarified a few things. I am in support for more funding for this project. I can't say that I have a well-founded proposal for any increase in dollar amount for this year based on good reason and all fairness and representation here. But I would ask that you do please come back to us if, like you said, it comes out that it costs more, maybe if it's even 400,000 to do what we think is the worst of the worst. I hope that you would bring that back and myself and some others, sounds like, are in favor of that. And then also looking in future years, that's what I was kind of trying to get at last week, too, is if we do 300,000 every year, do 25% of it, and in four years, we've done it all. So I'm, I'm definitely open to have this conversation again during this fiscal year if the cost increases for some reason and to look at this for future years. But I, I am in favor of as it is now because I don't feel like I have a well-founded reason for an increase in a dollar amount at this time. I hope that this is positive progress towards actually getting some construction done in the worst spots and again, hope to continue the conversation. I agree with Chris, I hope that we can see how things go and hear from the residents on where they think are some of the worst spots and how this is going so far and how to move forward in the future.
Any other comments, questions?
I think I just want to respond to one thing Jay brought up about Savannah Green not showing up after this fiscal year, you know, and what the draft is of the plan. And if, like Tim's been discussing, we're switching to more of a maintenance strategy with the alleys, really the, the maintenance programs we have, like the patching, the seal coating, the crack sealing, that we don't identify, list out all the locations that are going to get addressed in the capital improvement plan, just the, the larger capital projects. So that's just, this one thing is just in general, that's just, same with our pipes as well, the maintenance we do on our pipes and mining, we don't list it all out, but that's something that, yeah, just as a point of comparison, I guess.
Do you have an estimated time when residents might see work begin?
We want to, we're scheduled for the spring because we don't want to try to get it this late in the season because we'd be fighting some bad prices potentially by getting contractors at the, late in the season. We want to strike at the beginning of the season, try to get better prices.
Contractor bidding season, lowest prices are typically November through January. If you bid in the middle of summer, they're chock-full of work, so we're going to continue to see high prices. It's not that we couldn't do that. We could certainly put a bid together and get it constructed before November, we just may see higher prices. Typically, we try to, we try to target bids in that November to February timeframe if we can because they don't have their whole years planned out yet. I think we would be open if you guys wanted us to try to do something sooner. Which, that's not necessarily the CIP, but you can just tell us.
Chandra?
I mean, I, if you could put a bid together and see what the price is, you know, sooner than next spring, because I can't imagine driving over those potholes like in the wintertime when there's snow and ice, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we could probably do that.
Yep. Worst-case scenario, we reject a high bid. Yep.
Then if it's, if it's too high, then we'll have to resort to spring then.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
We have a motion on the floor for Resolution 2023-06-072R. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
No.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next item brought to you before the committee of the whole with a recommendation for approval is ordinance number 2023-06018 and ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number eight, fiscal year 2022-2023 estimate.
Second.
Second.
I would note that the council requested that Elizabeth add page numbers to reference the amendments on the exhibits, and she sent that around in an email. And this is a budget amendment which requires six of eight votes. Any questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin? Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
And the mayor votes.
Oh, Mayor Marlin, I'm sorry.
Yes. That motion passes.
Next item on the regular agenda for, with a recommendation for approval is ordinance number 2023-06-019 and ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 annual budget.
Second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Mary Alice. Discussion.
Grace?
Uh, thank you. Um, interesting. So for this year's budget, I will have two proposals that I would like to make for amendments. The first one is what I mentioned last week, I would move to add a placeholder in the budget for $100,000 for partnership for environmental projects. Last week, there was questions about what fund, I think the general fund would be appropriate. It could come from our healthy fund balance and healthy debt ratio as far as management. I think that grant might have been too strong of a word last week. I think what I'm thinking is more along the lines of partnerships that might be a fee-for-service memorandum of understanding, similar to like we do with township. There's a pool of funds for partner organizations and then there are memorandums of understanding, contracts for services for partnership for organizations that have the capacity, the expertise in areas outside of the scope of township. We already have some of those with the Bucket Brigade and Channing Murray, Solidarity Gardens are some examples. So this would be similar, I think, would be the idea. And so what I'm moving is for a placeholder there, with knowing that the details would need to be figured out along the way. And if not, then it would fall to the fund balance along with all their vacant positions and other things that we aren't able to execute within the year. I'm willing to do some work towards this as well. I already have some conversations, some ideas about what these projects might be. And so I would move to add a placeholder for $100,000 for environmental project partnerships.
Second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Chris. Discussion. Mary Alice?
So I could be wrong, but I believe the Bucket Brigade and all of those items are done by township and they're not done by our grants group here, regardless of how we do that. I would much rather vote on a process and a more of a concept plan in terms of what we were expecting these funds to be done before we even start thinking about allocation of funds. I'd much rather have that conversation first. So for that reason, I won't be voting for this.
Chandra?
I'm curious as to what sort of projects specifically you were thinking about, just, you know, ballparking or hypothetical, whatever you want to call it. I know you mentioned last week cherry trees and that sort of thing.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yes, I'd be happy to share some of those ideas and also to Mary Alice's point that, yes, I'm referring to township with some of those memorandums of understanding, using that as an example of how this may hap, might potentially happen here as a possibility. Some of those projects and some conversations were with, trying to get all the names right, Sologratia Garden for supporting community gardens, I've said that they are interested in that, but they don't have the current capacity to just expand beyond all the other things that they're already doing. to just expand beyond all the other things that they're already doing. So I think it's a matter of being able to support expanding the capacity of some of those organizations. In some very initial conversations, it sounds like there is interest in a possibility if we could help to expand their capacity, to maybe hire a part-time person for the summer to help with some community gardens, particularly in southeast Urbana apartment complexes off of Philo Road, something that got me especially amped up with the overlay district of zoning and regulating physical apartment buildings. I think it would be great to try and work towards having more community garden space and supporting that, eventually transitioning it to the residents to care for. But a lot of these things take money and resources to have someone be able to put the time into that. Some other ideas that have been mentioned were edible landscapes on city-owned properties or maybe other vacant lots. There's also a food waste composting program at the Landscape Recycling Center that the Landscape Recycling Center and another nonprofit have been great in facilitating, but the city itself has not contributed resources and possibly could. So I think that there are quite a few possibilities. Those are just a few kind of in the works. What I would be envisioning was possibly different memorandums of understanding, possibly 10 for 10,000 that could be able to do some of these projects with as far as community gardening and edible landscape. Also, we've talked a lot in Public Works about stormwater management. We didn't have, didn't approve the full ARPA amount, but I think that's another one that we could even look at city infrastructure as well as outside partner organizations on some environmental projects to help the community and our overall climate resiliency.
Sharice.
Did you do some kind of study as to what the cost of this would be for this to happen? Did you work with anybody at the city to get an idea of how much this would cost or what the, what the possible cost could be?
I'm trying to understand the relevance of that question.
Well, basically, you want, you want monies to go into something, but you're not saying about how, not necessarily really how much money or how much it would cost or how we would staff something like that in, I mean, a plan.
So it wouldn't be staffed by the city. It would be a partnership with outside organizations, similar to our youth services grant. It's a pot of money for 100,000, 300,000, depending on the year. We take applications and then allocate based on the projects within that. I'm not seeing the relevance of the question, what does it cost and what staff does it cost? This would be a matter of outside organizations, and we would just have a contract for fee-for-services for those kinds of things.
I can contribute to that. The 300,000, take social service grants, for example, that requires a staff member, first of all, to develop an application, to develop the rubric, to accept the applications, to score the applications, and I know you were part of that committee. But if we're distributing public funds, there has to be a process for distributing public funds, and then it's a matter of drafting the agreements, executing the agreements, and the legal, the legal aspects of that. So, so while I understand you're talking about $100,000 for special projects, there is staff time, there are people, there's time for people behind that and personnel behind that to execute it.
James.
Yeah, I'll say two things about this. First of all, I like the idea. I, I think, I hear what Mary Alice is saying with regard to let's have a plan and move forward with that, but the budget is a, is a blueprint, and if we want things to happen, we have to know that we can pay for them. So by saying that we're not going to put in a placeholder for this now, we're saying there's no way we can do anything until the next fiscal year as far as distributing money. So I'm not against putting the placeholder in there to give us the impetus to design the process to distribute the money. I think that that's a good thing. I also think that we need to be thinking in these terms, which is how can we encourage groups in this community who are interested in taking steps that address our sustainability to move forward and do the, do the work that needs to be done because we may not have the staff to do it. So I, I do like this idea. I do think that it's not $100,000, whether it's $120,000 or $130,000, depending on the administration to take in the applications, process them, build the process, write the agreements. There's some amount that we can't ignore that is going to go along with, if you're talking about 10 grants, that sounds small, but still, though, that is, there's an incremental cost for doing that process, implementing the agreements, even though somebody else is going to be doing it. So I would encourage us to do this. I do recognize that there is a cost that's not defined in the amount that we want to set aside for the work that we'd like to see done.
Jay.
Yeah, I, I agree with what James just said. I, I also don't have a problem with the allocation being 100,000 with the recognition that staff type would have to come out of that personally, but I do think that that is an expense that can't be ignored. If administering, you know, creating a new program and administering it costs money and was going to make the same point of, yes, having a process in place is, is best, but this is our opportunity to create the possibility of even doing that, so I'm supportive of this idea.
Chandra.
And I was going to say, I agree with my colleagues here. If there isn't the expertise here in the city to create some sort of process to, you know, to create this, this idea or, or facilitate this idea, rather, then we find an expert in the community to help us even create this process, and maybe that's what the initial $100,000 are for, that we create this process in this grant or, I don't know, allocation process with other community members, and this $100,000 is maybe just the, the start for this year. Maybe there's a little bit of city staff time, and maybe there's, you know, how we contract with RPC to have come up with the whole process for ARPA. Maybe we do the same with this process as well, and then the next fiscal year, it may be a different number to include city staff time or whatever other allocations we may need.
Sharice.
I'm just curious. I know it's a placeholder, so where are we going to get the funds? Where are we going to take it from? Or?
My motion was from the general fund.
From the general fund.
Elizabeth, could you weigh in on here in terms of possible sources?
I think it would be, it's certainly possible to take it from the general fund, fund, from the fund balance. It might also be possible to take it from the recycling fund because I think there, there is, there are probably funds available there.
My motion is from the general fund. I don't know if that is encompassing in the motion or not, but that was the motion.
Does that require reallocating from something else or taking from fund balance?
We can take it from fund balance. We're not going to, we're not going to run afoul of our fund balance policy if we do that.
Okay, let me make sure I've got the motion correct. It's a placeholder for $100,000 for environmental projects partnerships, and the money is to come from the fund balance. That is, as you understand it?
Yes.
Made by Grace, seconded by Chris. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
No.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Grace.
Thank you. I would also like to move an amendment to include in the budget ordinance language regarding license plate readers not being pre-authorized, and if I may pull up some draft language. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll pull that up, but motion for the language that I will pull up here momentarily.
Is it different from what was sent around?
Just a little clarifying language, which is from the discussions last week, so hopefully further in the direction of what some may be in agreement of. So same whereas clauses as we saw last week, and then in the therefore, it's just clarifying specifically some of the technology to avoid being as vague, and then followed by some definitions. Some of you may have paper copies as well.
Did you supply this to the council in advance?
Not the definitions part. The body of it, yes, was all provided last week in an email.
Section one was not provided.
This is a clarification. This is specifying what was in there last week with using specific types of technologies rather than saying license plate readers or other surveillance technologies. This was out of the conversation of wanting a little more clarification on some of the definitions on what surveillance technology entails.
Could you scroll back up so people can read it, please? Mary Alice.
Has anybody else in the city, like staff, seen this?
I have not sent it to others. I don't know if Chris wants to speak on this, was some of the definitions that he provided throughout that week.
No, staff has not seen this.
All right. I, I, it's, here, here's the deal with some of this technology. There's some stuff that, and I appreciate you provided some definitions here, but there are things that we might not quite understand. Remember when Chief Searls was talking to me about armored car vehicles and that there are uses for armored car vehicles? That's not necessarily in here, but that was a conversation I had with the chief at one time. I, I don't feel comfortable passing something like this broadly without having staff and legal look through it to make sure that it is actually doing what not only is in the intent of city council, but is also workable at the city level.
Chris.
I want to remind people that this resolution is only for bringing these things to public discussion and for a vote by city council. So the, what these things are and, and whether or not the police would want them and, and the discussion and the debate as to whether we would adopt these things would be provide, would be part of the process, and this resolution is only saying we're going to have a public debate and we're going to have a vote. That's all it's saying. It's not a, it's not against or for these things.
This is not a resolution. This is being presented as an amendment, but the language here is actually a resolution. Chandra.
But what if, we don't know everything that's going on with the police department, but what if some things, like surve, it said closed-circuit surveillance, like to me, that may be something that already exists. Like if we were to pass this, would, does that mean they'd have to, like, rescind things? I, that, that's the one thing that sort of caught my eye just initially on this. So maybe like if that, I don't know, were to be admitted, because I would assume that closed-circuit surveillance, like we have monitors in the, or cameras in the city building, like what, to what extent do you mean, like outside of, like in neighborhoods or, you know, I, I, it may need a little bit more clarification with that.
Grace.
Thank you. I think that's a good point. I think what this says here is that this is about budget funds from this year's budget being used to purchase those things, and so if they're already in existence, that's, I'd say that doesn't apply. In the previous iteration, we had newly purchased, because I think that there are some things where we plan to replace some cameras or some equipment that's already in existence. My intention here is just for newly implemented things that require purchasing from the budget. So I think in that sense that pre-existing equipment and technologies wouldn't fall under that. This is just to purchase new ones out of this year's budget.
Sharice.
For the sake of transparency, when did this come, when did this idea come to you?
Over a year ago, when we discussed license plate readers and other public safety matters. I brought this up last year at the budget. I've brought this up this year in the budget, in every conversation that I've had about the budget with city staff privately and in meetings. We had a discussion about it last week. It was brought up the week before that. I was not present, but it was discussed. So we've, this has been brought up for quite a while over the past year and a half.
My question, though, is have you thought about not, number one, last year, you know, we've been searching for a new chief, so we have a new chief that's coming in that I'm sure would have a lot of opinion about some of this regarding on public safety, regarding different types of situations that could possibly happen that may require or people may request, citizens may request this. We, I'm, I, all I'm thinking of, to be honest, is how, how long it took us to turn down an amendment for budgeting for some, for just license plate readers, and yet there's a whole litany of, of certain equipment that could affect public safety, at least in my neighborhood, I don't know about yours, on a more positive level, and yet, you know, we barely had any real discussion openly about it. That's what I'm saying. And I would, before I would, could consider this, I would like to get the opinions also of people that this is their bailiwick, this is what they work in, this is what they do, and I don't want to see the ripple effects of not, not being able to, to, to basically have some of, you know, any of this and how it may potentially harm the public as well. I, I think, I think a lot, I think a lot of times we look at things and we, you know, we see and we can go back to the 70s and talk about, you know, what the FBI did and all that kind of stuff, but the fact of the matter is that we are in a, a political environment now where people are, you know, coming to meetings and threatening people and all kinds of things, and some of this stuff would be very, would probably be helpful in keeping some folks just safe. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Chris.
And this resolution will allow you, Sharice, to make that argument, and we would have, you know.
We would do that anyway, Chris.
Right. But that's all this, this is all we're, right, so that's what we're doing. We're just putting in writing, "Any purchase or implementation of such surveillance technology requires due public process and approval from council." That's all this is.
It would be done anyway.
This is, Mary Alice.
I was just going to remind people that this is, what is being proposed is an amendment to the actual budget, but what we have on the screen right now is written like it is a, is a resolution, so that... So that...
Yes, I didn't understand what y'all were getting at, but it's because it was the word resolved instead of ordained. Is that the issue? It would be that this would be added, so we already have a budget ordinance. This would be an additional section, maybe sections four and five, on the existing sections of the ordinance.
Well, the clerk, or with, Mary Alice, will you please take the chair?
Sure, I'll take the chair.
This discussion came up last week. We pointed out last week that language like this is far too broad to be included in a budget ordinance, and frankly, I think it compromises public safety. I read a statement last week related to license plate readers, which is where this conversation started. I would like to read it again for the public record. "The City of Urbana will not authorize or purchase automated license plate reader ALPR technology without explicit majority approval from the Urbana City Council. While the prior debate and vote on ALPRs centered on a budget amendment to purchase ALPRs rather than a general policy statement, the council discussion and 4-3 vote defeating the amendment made the position of the majority of the council very clear."
Vote the chair back?
Yes.
I relinquish the chair.
Yeah, so I, I knew about this. I knew about the concern about ALPRs. I knew about the general language. This detailed language, which I'm going to say includes things that don't make sense to me for restriction, like closed circuit television, that, that can be useful if you have a blind entrance or exit to a building to be able to know what's going on outside the door. It, it is, there's, there's too much to this to be a part of a budget proposal. I would entertain, as last year, I would entertain a discussion of policy with regard to this, so that these individual items can be reviewed and discussed as far as as a matter of policy, whether the City of Urbana wants to own these things. I see on here, social media mining. Social media, looking at social media is a investigative tool. It is by all means an investigative tool. Are we going to prohibit companies from collecting information, mining people on residents of the City of Urbana? Is that, is that what we're looking at? Because that is a matter for the state or for the federal government to address with regard to the privacy of individuals. Social media, things that you share publicly are like walking down the street and having your picture taken, walking down the street. You're, you've put it out there. So I think this is, this list, while it may include a few things that I would entertain having some input on, it has a lot of things on here that I don't think make sense. Some things that are just not proper to add to the list. And so bringing it with this kind of detail at this moment, when you've been thinking about it for a year, I don't know. I, I, I don't want to vote on this tonight, and I will vote no if it comes before us.
Jaya?
Thank you. I, I have to say, I don't feel like I have adequate time to, to weigh in on all of the sections that are included here, even, even with the idea of it coming, you know, just in front of us. I don't know enough about some of the things that are included here to, to make that judgment. Looking at what was included previously or shared with council, I, I did think that some of the language was too, too vague or too broad, which I think that's what this was probably trying to address. But it, what, what I would say is, I, I, neither of those make me comfortable, right, in terms of what would go into a budget ordinance. However, I think with the conversations that have been had about ALPRs, I don't think it does any harm to include a note within the budget ordinance clarifying for the public that this is not approving funding for ALPRs. It's been stated, but it's a way of reinforcing that fact and putting it in a binding document for residents who still have questions, right? That's, yes, that vote was taken, that was resolved, but the reason it came before us was because it wasn't in the budget, right? And so I, you know, including something, you know, adding something along the lines of the budget is not, you know, providing approval of, for purchase of license plate readers, I'm perfectly comfortable with, but I, and I do think that there's a space for that, because we asked, we've been saying, oh, this is, you know, we could create a resolution, but we didn't see any movement on that last year, right? So I think at providing that peace of mind for people, but being specific, if that's the specific concern, is, is where I would land.
Sharice?
I'm kind of dovetailing what Jaya said. Peace of mind is pretty kind of subjective. The reason why the whole issue with ALPRs really came to city council was not about whether or not it was in the budget, it was because black babies were dying by gunfire. That's why. We were listening, we were hearing gunfire five nights a week and in the middle of the afternoon. And no, this had not been an issue before. And so, yes, there was nothing in the budget to say ALPRs or, or surveillance cameras, which is what we initially wanted. Okay? So you had, my, my take with any of this is that there was a public that requested, there was a certain percentage of the public that requested ALPRs. There's a certain, there was a certain percentage of the public that feels safer because, yeah, we do, the, the police do monitor people's social media stuff, because that's where they brag about what they do. This is something that I don't think many of you even understand, that that's how a lot of the police investigation starts, and that's how we are able to find people that are harming other folks. The thing...
I'd like to remind us, let's keep the conversation focused on the language in front of us here.
We can keep it focused on that, but what's I'm focusing on is some of the stuff that is listed in this, is some of the, the very investigative tools that we need to find people who are harming others. And I'm sorry if it makes some people feel uncomfortable, but if you feel uncomfortable, I want you to think about the fact that a lot of the, the crime that is happening and has happened, especially considering...
Point of order. This doesn't seem relevant to the discussion at hand, and it's...
It is irrelevant, because you opened the door.
Providing assertions about other council members that are not appropriate.
You opened the door. You opened the door.
No. Let's focus on this resolution or this language. There's no motion on the floor yet for this language that's on the screen in front of us. Is there a motion? Grace?
I had thought I'd move it. I'm happy to again. The point I wanted to add with discussion is that I'm also open to going back to what I proposed last week that was too vague, tried to add some definitions. Now it's too specific. I would also just like to remind us all that this is only about approval process for purchasing out of this budget. It's not about the use for them by the city or outside organizations, just about the public process.
Unless there's language to consider. Do you have language to consider?
Yes, I move to amend the budget ordinance to include the two sections that have been displayed on the screen.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we're looking at the two sections on the screen. Unless there's further, James?
I, I cannot support this motion.
I just want to remind council that the list of these surveillance devices is not a list against them. It is a list that says you have to bring it to council and the public before you can buy it. That's all it says.
Thank you. I think we understand that. Any other discussion? All right, we'll call for a vote on this language. Ms. Wu?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Ms. Colacetti?
No.
Ms. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
No.
That motion fails. All right, we'll move on to the budget ordinance itself. Is there a motion?
Motion's already on the floor. Those were two amendments.
That was Chandra and Mary Alice.
And then the, there's the amendment with the, the environmental efforts.
Yes, which has passed. Okay. So this will be a vote on ordinance number 2023-06-019 with, as amended, with a placeholder for $100,000 for environmental projects. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin? Yes. That motion passes. Moving on to ordinance, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chandra.
Where are we?
We're D. We're on D.
Okay. Ordinance, I recommend to the council for approval coming from the Committee of the Ho, ordinance number 2023-05-014, ordinance adopting the International Code Council's 2021 Code Series.
Second. Moved by Chandra, seconded by Jaya. Discussion. I would point out that there were some changes requested by city council, and those have been added to the language. Mary Alice?
I, I just wanted to thank staff and specifically Nick for working through some of the items that I went and clarified. Those were added, and I appreciate the efforts. Specifically, what happened beyond city council was a request to add in language about the types of electrical extension cords that were allowed, and that was added to this.
Also was added a, one of the exceptions for failure to comply violations included when the owner, manager, contractor is unable to perform repairs due to inclement weather. And also the language that whenever in the building code, there's a conflict with the zoning ordinance of the city, the provisions of the zoning ordinance shall apply. So I believe that was all the changes requested. Okay. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And the last item brought to the city council from the Committee of the Ho has no recommendation. It's ordinance number 2023-06-020, an ordinance approving a major variance for 10 West California LLC at 410 West California Avenue, case number ZBA 2023 MAJ 01.
All right, good evening. So y'all should have received a follow-up memo from planning staff, and that memo was to clarify the intent of the zoning ordinance and the variance request at hand, and to focus tonight's discussion on the variance criteria. Now, I'm not going to go through all those criteria, but I did want to make a couple of general comments, sort of about the essence of variances. So variances are a mechanism to provide relief to property owners when the zoning ordinance and site conditions create a hardship for the owner. Variances should also serve the public interest, or at the very least, not harm the public interest. The variance criteria are there to help determine whether there is a hardship and whether that hardship warrants relief from the zoning regulations. So essentially, the task at hand tonight, and in every other variance case, is to use the criteria to determine, first, if there is a hardship, and if so, whether a variance is warranted. That concludes my remarks, and we'll take questions if you have any.
Questions for Kevin. Sharice?
This is the gentleman that last, was here last week, and he really, basically, he's one of, he wants to put the garage in front. Is this the one I'm thinking about?
Correct.
And he really did not have to come to us to get this variance, correct?
Yeah, so, and that's in the supplementary memo we sent out, we wanted to clarify. The ask is actually, and the intent of the ordinance is related to how wide the driveway is, or the access drive, as the zoning ordinance calls it. So, yeah, the two-car garage is sort of irrelevant. The zoning ordinance is really about how much, like how wide your driveway can be. And really, if you read the ordinance, it's about parking in the required front yard. So the intent of the ordinance is to not have, you know, a lot of cars sort of parked in the front yard adjacent to the right of way.
Okay.
Chandra?
Since there was no recommendation, does that mean that there needs to be a recommendation now?
There needs to be a motion and a second.
Okay. Well, I will make the motion that the city council does not approve this major variance.
I second.
It was moved by Chandra, seconded by Mary Alice, to deny major variance. Grace?
Thank you. Trying to see if you, are you saying directly or implying that this is a safety issue by the garage driveway being one versus two cars wide?
That's, that could be a small part of it. It wasn't a big discussion at zoning board about safety.
Just trying to understand what you're saying, because it seems like, especially with the follow-up, you're kind of saying, you know, the staff does not recommend this, and here's why, meeting the criteria and saying that needs to meet these, or at least not have a public nuisance or public safety concern, right?
I, I don't believe I said public safety. I said public interest.
And so are you saying that this is against the interest in some way? I'm just, I'm not seeing, if, if you're alluding to, you have a concrete reason why you're against this, I'm just not understanding what that is.
Yeah, so the reasons are all stated in the staff memo.
Okay. I, I see that, so.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Chris?
My memory, Marcus, is that the garage in the front was out of character, correct? Out of the neighborhood.
So the, the garage itself would be out of character, but the garage is not what is being asked.
I know. I understand that, but...
Also, the cars parking in front of the garage would be out of character.
Okay. So I thought the cars were going into the garage. Is that not the case, or?
They may, or they may not, but there is, there would be at least 15 feet of access drive in front of the garage, because that's the required yard, and that would be space that two cars could park in, that the city would not be able to regulate, because you're allowed to park in an access drive in front of a garage.
Yeah, and the applicant also stated that they wanted to park two cars there.
They, they explicitly said, we're going to park outside the garage, in front of the garage.
At committee and at zoning board.
Okay, okay.
Mary Alice?
I, I just wanted to confirm that even if a, even if they built the two-car garage, and if they stayed within the zoning requirements, they would still be able to access that two-car garage in the front of the house. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, the motion on the floor is to deny the major variance at 410 West California Avenue. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
No.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chandra. Last item on the agenda. Our reappointments to boards and commissions. Those include Ricardo Diaz to the Civilian Police Review Board for a term starting July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2026. Another reappointment is Katrina Kendall, July 1st, 2023, through June 30th... Another reappointment is Katrina Kendall, July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2026. For the Community Development Commission, Deshaun Williams, July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2026. Zoning Board of Appeals, Ashley McLaughlin, July 1st, 2023, and June 30th, 2028. And then the one that you have in front of you tonight is an appointment to the Human Relations Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2026, and this is Siobhan Gibson. She's a three-year resident of Urbana, is an export compliance officer at the U of I. She ensures compliance with federal export control regulations, sponsoring agency policies and procedures. She collaborates closely with multiple university departments, offering guidance, direction, and oversight. She's certified in intercultural communications from the National Association of International Educators, and has experience as a small group facilitator. Her personal statement, or her, in her application, she stated that, quote, "My interests include fostering respect, tolerance, and inclusion in our community. I would like to help the commission empower the community and its institutions by promoting educational opportunities, cooperative activities, and other such endeavors to create an informed and inclusive multicultural society." This commission is a nine-member commission, so it takes a lot to fill, so I believe this would be eight. This will be our eighth member on this commission, and we still have another vacancy to fill.
Thank, yeah, quick question. How are we doing on the Civilian Police Review Board? How many more do we need to fill on that one?
Uh, I think we have five, and we need two more, I believe.
Okay. What's the process to getting on the Civilian Police Review Board?
Accept applications, evaluate them based on the criteria outlined in the ordinance.
Right. And then you and the chief make a, the final decision, or?
No, the, well, the chair of the CPRB and I, and usually the chief or deputy chief interview the person.
Okay, thank you.
So I would entertain a motion for these reappointments and the new appointment.
I will move that we make a reappointment for Ricardo Diaz, Katrina Kendall, Deshaun Williams, Ashley McLaughlin, and a new appointment for Siobhan Gibson.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jayah. Any discussion?
Just a quick question. Have all of these individuals served a full term, or are some of them partial?
Uh, let me look here. Ricardo, Katrina, for sure, three of the four. I believe Ashley has as well. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. With no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned, and again, a reminder, there will be no meetings on July 3rd or July 10th. The town board meeting will be rescheduled, and Danielle's working with her leadership team to determine the date. Thank you.